Looks like everybody's sitting in their seats. All right, so I'd like to bring to order the Rock Valley Community College District Number 511 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Can we have a roll call, please?
Nelson, Simpson.
Yes, here.
Trojan.
Yep, here.
Goldsmith, yes. Kudia, Blake, Saltau.
Here.
Gorski.
Here. All righty, I'm not aware of either trustee who's not currently in attendance contacting us by phone or otherwise, so I'm actually expecting both of them to pop their heads in any minute now, but we'll move ahead to communications and petitions.
There are no communications or petitions this evening?
Well, we do, we have this one. It's a letter addressed to the Board of Trustees for, from FAWK and Foster on behalf of Total Energies regarding community solar farms. I'm going to pass it along to President Spearman, who can pass it along to his staff for evaluation of how appropriate it may or may not be for the college. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. No other communications or petitions then. All right, recognition of visitors.
No recognition of visitors at this time.
Okay, any comments on the Committee of the Whole minutes from November 4th? Hearing none. General presentations?
No general presentations.
All right, Teaching, Learning, Communications Board Liaison, Trustee Goldsmith, please.
Dr. Smith is not here, so I'm handing it over to VP Snyder.
Thank you very much, and also since Dr. Smith isn't here tonight, after the tech bus presentation, Dr. Mark Lanting will be doing the DARA presentation. First, the enrollment update. Since this packet went out, we have had some changes. We are currently 4% ahead of last year for winterum, which is 26% ahead of budget and 18% ahead of the stretch goal. For spring, we're 4% ahead of last year, 80% to budget, and 77% to the stretch goal. And if you combine all the semester, or yeah, all the terms that have happened thus far in the fiscal year, we're 5% ahead of last year, 95% to budget, and 91% to stretch goal. And I do want to point out, since ICCB recently released their fall enrollment reports, I want to remind everyone of the differences between this monthly report and the fall reports released by ICCB. Two things, ICCB's reports are a point in time, and we continue to monitor fall throughout the entire semester. Since we have late start, that could start as late as midterms. And then also, the ICCB report includes adult education, and this report does not for budget comparison purposes. So while this report shows that we're ahead of last year, the ICCB report shows that we were about flat, which is what I shared during our 14th day enrollment report earlier this year. Are there any questions?
I just, I think, no? Okay, well, I just wanted to mention that I've raised this question to President Spearman, and I believe to trustee Trojan, and I just wanted to, in the future, I think, I just want to have a discussion amongst the board members to determine, to get clarification, thank you, further clarification on the different numbers that we see, because there's some numbers that are reported by like, public information sites, the ones for the ICCB, the one report that you file with the ICCB, and then our own internal reports, and what they include and don't include, and just kind of lay them all out at the same time and then figure out which ones. What I'm concerned about is that each of us is a different board member, may pick different things out of different reports and use those as, you know, their milestones and stuff. And we need to come to an agreement on, you know, what we're going to use as a general, you know, metric. So it's just, we're going to be probably asking you for more information in the future, just so we know, you know, what we're on. We had a trustee pull something out of a report the other day that was inconsistent with something that was filed, but again, as Heather just mentioned, it's based on different numbers and different programs and the like. I just want to have a little bit more detailed discussion again about it in the future, not right now. So I'll lay out my questions and poll the trustees and any other questions they may have, forward it to you, and let your team handle it, all right?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Thank you very much for that report, though. I do appreciate the clarification, so.
Of course, you're welcome. I'll move on then to the lobbyist update. Just first, I want to remind the trustees of the annual legislative luncheon hosted by the Northern Illinois Council of Governments, which is occurring next Tuesday, December 9th, at 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the UMB Bank Pavilion. At the Rock Valley College table, we will have Dr. Spearman, Jen Thompson, several trustees, a representative from Light Strategies, which is our lobbyist, and myself, attending. The panelists at that event include Representatives Cabello, Szaznowski, Vella, and Wes, and Senators Ariano, Stottlemann, and Severson. And then also, I'd like to invite all of you to our very own RVC Legislative Breakfast, which will be held Wednesday, December 17th, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., with the program beginning at 8:15. We'll be in the Health Sciences Center lobby, and the purpose of this breakfast is to have an open dialogue about our shared priorities, including updates on key Rock Valley College initiatives and legislators' higher education priorities for the upcoming legislative session. And Ann will follow up with the trustees via email with the details of that breakfast.
How does that differ with the other one?
So the luncheon will be several people in our region, and we will not have the opportunity to talk, so we won't have the opportunity to share our priorities. It'll be a panel discussion moderated by somebody, and we'll just hear from the legislators. But the RVC breakfast will only be us and our elected officials, so that we'll be able to have a more targeted conversation.
And do we prepare for that by having a list of things we want to say, and who's going to say them, and that kind of thing?
Yeah, we've already discussed with trustee Goldsmith and our lobbyists, so we've already started to have that conversation about priorities for Rock Valley College and community colleges in general.
Trustee Nelson.
So who is the lead at the legislative breakfast?
So the lead in organizing is, it's co-led, Dr. Letitia Wallace, who is our lobbyist, and Jen Thompson have been working together to organize the event, of course, with Dr. Spearman's leadership on that.
And is Letitia Wallace going to be there?
Yes.
And then the other luncheon, first of all, when is that again? Following up with Bob, is there a different approach there, or?
Yeah, they're actually quite different. So the luncheon is going to be a large regional event. Some of us attended last year, and there, I mean, it's not just Rock Valley College. There'll be lots of other organizations there to listen to what the legislators' priorities are. So that's, and then the breakfast is a much more intimate event with just Rock Valley College.
And so, again, when and where, where is the luncheon?
The luncheon is next Tuesday, December 9th, at 11:00 a.m. at the UMB Bank Pavilion. I believe Ann already has RSVPs for those trustees who are attending since we had to...
Yeah, there was an email that went out to everybody. I just want to point out, so the 9th, you're listening to their priorities. The 17th, they're listening to our priorities. Good point. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
More breakfasts or lunches we can go to before the year is over?
I will try to throw a couple more in there.
Oh, that's all right.
We've got some free time.
Free food is good.
So are we moving to, that was, was that the lobbyist's update? Or, okay, so we're moving to technology bus? I just want to intervene on the technology bus update. In your packet, there's a quite thorough PowerPoint presentation on how many repairs the current tech bus needs, and how the administration would like to move on from the tech bus to another solution because of the cost of the maintenance and the, kind of, the change in the plan for the tech bus. And instead of going through the first part of the thing, the presentation, which is just a list of all the things that are broken down on the tech bus, I would, I would ask that we could just go straight into the ask going forward. But if any one of you want to hear everything that's been broken on the tech bus, just let me know, and he'll give his full presentation. Nope? Just do the sell then, ask, okay?
All right, so, good evening, trustees. So as mentioned, we have had the tech bus for quite, you know, for some time, and it has served a purpose of being a community service vehicle. It has served different members of the community. But looking at the fact that we have other vehicles or other avenues of community service, such as we have WizKids, we also have Center for Learning and Retirement, we have community education, and we also have SmartCamp. Now, with four of those are listed there, they are all revenue streams coming in to help offset expenditure and expenses. The tech bus doesn't have that, you know, opportunity afforded to it. So when things have gone wrong, and the inflection point really for me is, we have a quote from the shop that says that, you know, there is something transmission related, they are not 100% sure, but they told us if we change the transmission and some surrounding parts, it should cost us around $34,000. The question becomes, do we continue in the vein of just looking to replenish and fix another litany of things? Because it's two buckets. It's either generator issues, or it's either transmission issues that are wrong with the tech bus, right? So we are proposing that we continue to service the community and let this proposed mobile unit have a dichotomic function. It will serve the community, but it will also help us with workforce development. So we could actually do workforce development training, short-term training and development, like some of the colleges have done, to bring in a revenue stream. You think that's more lucrative? And at the end of the presentation, I quoted four different colleges for you that actually have mobile units that move around, and they meet industry needs in terms of customized training and development, and they also provide trainings in workforce areas or workforce domains that we currently provide. So the ask is, you know, for us to think about going in the direction of not giving up, because I can tell you, in terms of the bus servicing people, within the last two years, we went to UW Sports Factory, served 300 people, YMCA, 200 people, the teen program, 200, City First Church, 200 people, Boys and Girls Club, 250, and we have served retirement homes, at least 300 retirees in different homes. So it has served this purpose. My concern is that there is not a revenue stream to help offset all the expenditure that we are trying, that we are faced with at this juncture. As I mentioned, the inflection point is this $34,000 that is being quoted to be able to fix it, you know, or hopefully fix it. Trustee Nelson?
Yes, and I'm looking at two estimates here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but one is for $580,000, and the other one is for 500 to 750,000. I'm just a country lawyer from Rockford, Illinois, but it sure seems to me that that pays for a lot of repairs.
You mean, considering...
I don't care what you're ready, you know, are you telling me that the new mobile unit's going to bring in 100,000 a year, 200,000 a year? I'm a little scared to go about that.
Well, that's why I told you, there is research, and we reached out to four different colleges to get an idea of what they are doing. I didn't want to go too much deeper into the research unless if we were sure we want to move in this direction, but I cited there's a revenue stream that's missing here, because the cost to repair the bus, the bus has been in the shop more than it has been outside, especially within the last year, and especially with this transmission supposed issue, because the shop even said they are not 100% sure that the transmission is the issue. They are 80% sure. So they are suggesting if we do that and we change...
Why are you laughing? He knows my car's in work for transmission work today, and I got that very same thing. $2,500, and they don't know if it's actually going to fix the problem.
Yes, yes. So, you know...
Don't be laughing at me.
I'm just being pragmatic here in terms of, you know, they are not sure. So again, I'm coming to you, or will have to come to you for an ask for $34,000 to fix something that is not guaranteed to fix.
Yes, Jen?
Thank you. Well, speaking for myself, I could not support some $500 to $750,000 expenditure when $34,000 might get our current mobile tech bus back up and running. I would, I also cannot support any expenditure anywhere close to that unless I see revenue streams that are sufficient to justify it. And by that, I mean, if we went out and got a loan and had to pay the loan off with interest, how many years would it take us to pay it with all this hypothetical revenue stream that we're being, that we're discussing? I'll just leave it at that. And... And while we were talking to the other colleges, did we get any estimates of revenue streams? Or did they want to keep that to themselves? Or do we have it and we're just not hearing about it? But unless I hear about it and hear about the comparison with the four colleges and what they're bringing in, I think this is a colossal waste of money.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I just want to reiterate, really, we have three options here, all right? First of all, this been, the tech bus has been a money guzzler, so we've been spending a lot more than $34,000 on it. At this point, it's just the icing on the cake, the tip of the iceberg. He's recommending that we stop. So we have three options. We just stop moving forward with the tech bus. The tech bus was based on donations. We spent that, those dollars, we've expensed those. We can stop right now, and that's the end of the tech bus. We can, second option is, we pay the $34,000 and move forward next summer and see if the bus works. But the tech bus, in the way that it was set up, really wasn't a revenue stream. It was more of a community engagement piece, get people a little excited about the space. We can try it, $34,000, maybe $35,000. It may work, it may not. And then the third option is, if you don't like the first two, the third option is, we would move forward identifying grant dollars. We would not spend institutional dollars, we would look for grant dollars. So we would not make a decision right away. We would have to do the research on the revenue, how we would move forward, and we will identify grant funds to see if we can purchase the trailer and fix the trailer so that it's something that we want on the inside. But we don't necessarily want to go down that path if there's no consensus that we need to go down that path, because that wasn't the original consensus of the tech bus.
And then Cascia College in central Illinois, they use federal grants to do this. If I had gotten a chance to present the end of the presentation, I would have mentioned that my goal was to look for workforce grants, and we have a current grant we could repurpose part of it, because it's still workforce, it's just changing the vehicle of delivery. So I could just repurpose that if I have to. But it's not an issue for me to find a grant, federal or a state grant, to be able to fund this. Nobody was going to use institutional dollars for that. As I said, my inflection point was, coming here to express paying $34,000 to fix something that you're not even guaranteed is going to be fixed, is a bit much. Yes.
Trustee Trojan?
Oh, she was first.
Well, you had your hand up when he did, so I'm going to come back to you, so.
Well, I realize that the initial idea of this was not a revenue generator, but I wonder have we, were able, were we able to keep records of the students that did go on the bus? Did they eventually migrate to Rock Valley College? Or some way of tying the people, the kids that go on the buses, to attendance at Rock Valley in any way?
Was there some certain measure of success of its marketing potential?
Yes, that's why I gave the statistics just now. The coordinator for the bus gave me some rough estimates over the last two years of the different venues that the bus attended and the number of people that were serviced by the bus for two years, for a two-year period.
But we were not capturing names of students to put them in the CRM to track them the way we can now.
No. Because that would be the payoff.
That would be next, yes. We just, remember, we just got the CRM up and running the last two years, so they have not been doing that on that level.
Trustee Simpson?
So as far as you say trailer, you're talking like a semi-type vehicle, so just essentially a different type of vehicle, and then we can.
Yeah, mobile type.
Bigger, you can use it for more.
Yes, so hopefully it will be able to be used, as I said, for workforce training, short-term development training and stuff, and also be a service item too as well, to provide its usual service, like how we service the retired homes, we service the YMCA, the public school districts, things of that nature. So it will have a twofold function too as well. In terms of the actual specs of it, we haven't gotten that far yet, because we have to decide what we want to do.
More question. As, and I see the different places you took it, but how often was it actually going out, the bus?
It used to go out. Every, once operational, it would be every week the bus would go out. Yeah, once operational. But to be honest with you, within the last year and a half to two, it has been really difficult, because long periods of time caught up in the shop for generator issues, other occasions, transmission issues, other times it has been stalled, and then we had to get somebody to come and tow it, you know, to go to the shop and stuff like that.
But you see value at continuing some sort of mobile?
If I see a value in it?
You see a value in that, though?
Yes, because I think our core mission here as a community college is to serve the needs of the community. The needs of the community is multifaceted. It's not linear, it's not a monolith. We're not only serving high school students, we serve in retired persons, disabled people, we serve incarcerated people, we serve a multitude of things. So I think that to remove that component from it and make it solely workforce development would be a disservice, because that's why I gave you guys numbers to show you the number of different entities or homes or places we went to, and the number of people that benefited from the service. So that community service element must remain core to our function.
All right. So President Spearman, I don't want to direct it at you unfairly, so your administration's considering the tech bus, you still want to do a mobile strategy? The tech bus is a money pit, and you're looking for another tool to meet that strategy goal?
Correct. And if we can get.
John, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I am somewhat surprised that it is, that the representation now is more what I think the facts are, is that the tech bus has been mentioned to me as a waste of time and money, although at the time it was very popular. And if I recall, we had a professor who was very interested and worked it up, put it through, and also, I think, helped raise money to get it moving. And so, from the planning and policy perspective, which we trustees are supposed to have, it seems to me that really, the administration wants to replace the tech bus with something a little more ritzy and with a few more bells and whistles, and justifies it by saying that it's going to draw in revenue streams, and it's going to service more people and whatever. And of course, the tech bus did essentially that for free. Now, we pay the expenses, but it's free to the community. So I think that's not a positive. And the representation, if I heard it correctly, is that, don't worry about the costs we have, we'll be looking for more grant money, and if that doesn't work, we have a grant and we can shift the money. Of course, that leads to more expenses, that leads to the shifting of money from other sources to make up the difference. And at some point, and I think, and I hope, that this, my summary somehow makes the minutes, because if, you know, a year down the road, two years down the road, three years down the road, turns out that this isn't, doesn't work, or we couldn't get grants, which hardly anyone can get grants anymore out of the federal government, and it's a bust, you know, there should be people held responsible for that. And ultimately, I think the trustees ought to be held responsible, because they're the ones that said, oh yeah, it sounds like a good idea to me.
Trustee Nelson?
Yes.
If you want your comments in the minutes, send them to them first thing tomorrow morning. Otherwise, they're not obligated to put your summary in the minutes. They ought to say, John Nelson spoke to the issue. So if you want more than that, send it to them.
Ringo, Ringo.
Okay? Because otherwise, as a former recording secretary, I would just say considerable discussion ensued, and move on. So if you want them noted, go ahead. Trustee Trojan, did you have something else?
Yeah, I would say, if we go forward with this, I'd like to see some way of measuring the outcomes, in terms of either numbers or students that eventually sign up to come to Rock Valley, and maybe you have a, basically a signup sheet right there when you do your tours, I don't know, but some way of measuring the outcome of all these various visits over the course of a year.
Well, now we should see. I had a feeling, my shoulder was tingling, so go ahead.
First, let me just say, I appreciate your presentation. I know that you didn't get to give the whole spiel, but I get what you're asking for, and I get the other side of, if this doesn't work, my concern would only be that we spend $34,000, it works for a little bit, then we're back in here, you're asking for more money to fix it again. I get that. I think that's just how we roll the dice, it's going to go. But I do think that in the future of Rock Valley College, example in my brain right now, I'm thinking, we're, the newspaper is becoming extinct, right? We're not in the newspaper anymore. But what is becoming for the future, for our kids, for them, is technology like this, computers, you know, IT, things like that. And I've done a little bit of research of these mobile things myself, and the one thing that sticks out is that it does serve the community centers, events, and the underserved communities. It helps strengthen the partnerships with others that we are always trying to do, strengthen the partnerships with the community members, and visibility, so people can see that Rock Valley is out there. That's what we want. We want them to come out there. So if they continuously see things, how it's going to be in the future, I do see the benefit of that now. On the flip side of that, I do, I know that you said that you reached out to four colleges, and you didn't go any more into depth, because it wasn't necessary at the time, because you're only presenting to us. But I think that when you do come back with something like that, you know some people on the board here are going to want every nick and cranny of that, right? So it is very important to me for us to see every single benefit of it. But like I said in my notes, the things that I kept reiterating to myself, how does that, you know, compare to us? You know, I wrote down the equal access to tech resources regardless of the student's background or schedule. You are able to get there for them, it's hands-on work. These are all things that are going to benefit across the board, whether you're in kindergarten, whether you're in, you know, middle school, high school, like you said, retirees. Some people are, you know, still to this day technically challenged, and this could be something of a benefit to them. Because I'm sick of my dad calling me every five minutes about something on his phone, and I have to run over there, just, you know, for, you know, fun jokes to say. But it is something that is going to be very much big part of our future. And if we're going to be left behind, I don't see visibility very much for RVC in that area. So I do appreciate both sides a little bit, but I definitely want more of those details in the future to see how that works out for everybody. That's it.
I'm going to check in with Gloria.
Well, a lot of what has been said here, I've got on my notes here. First of all, how many students are served annually with the tech bus? And obviously, it's difficult to measure, I know it is, but there is a very huge marketing value to it. Think about it. Think about all those beautiful signs that we put up for Skylights programs every year along Malford. How do we know how many people actually attend one of those events? We just know that we planted those seeds. As far as I'm concerned, the tech bus does that too. And Ms. Thompson knows, sometimes you can't measure those things. But those seeds are planted, and it's showing the public, yes, we're out there. We're not just in our little pocket of the world on Malford, just waiting for somebody to show up. We're out there. I'm not saying let's pay, let's do this. I'm just saying it's either pay now or pay later. But figure out, let's us, as trustees, figure out. I don't see this as the administration coming to us and saying, this is what we want to do. We're saying, here are the facts.
Exactly.
This is what's happening.
Yes.
You either go with it or we don't, then we just do as you're told, as we're told. To me, I find it valuable, and I can connect with some of the things that trustee Crystal is saying, that hands-on works, it works. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
President Spearman?
So, at this point, what I think I wanted to do is make sure we're all on the same page. We want, at this point, we want to take a pause on the tech bus and fixing the tech bus.
At which cost?
At the $34,000. We're just going to hold off for a second and spend some time on some research and details of the vision we would have next for this next one. And then we want to bring that back to you for you to decide if you want us to move forward that way. I do believe, being, having a mobile unit, that's access. Remember, that's one of the things you really wanted as a board when I first got hired, you were really pushing us to get that tech bus out there. So now, that thing is broken. So we can, we can continue to spend that money, or we can pause on that, so you won't see it for a while, while we come up with a new plan. I want to make sure that that's okay.
That's okay, but just to hold us accountable, the board and the administration accountable, when you come back to us, you're going to have your recommendation. And even if your recommendation isn't even for the tech bus, you're going to come back with a report that we'll vote on to approve, and your report will either say, we don't recommend that we advance it, but we're offering it to the board to vote on it and pay for it, or we do recommend that we pay for the repair, if only just so we can get rid of the bus. So, and then you'll have a dollar amount in it, and we'll be able to vote on it, up or down, and then we're going to go, that's going, we're going to be on record of advancing the tech bus or not advancing the tech bus on that single item, and then any other order, you know, anything else you want us to take in action on or for. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay, because we're going to be accountable. And your report doesn't have to say, we recommend this, it's just, we were instructed to present it to you, and we vote, we're not really in favor of this, but we're offering it up to you for a vote.
Okay.
But if you do run it, you know, get it, again, if only just so we can move the bus, you know? Right now, where's the bus?
In the shop.
In the shop? And they're just going to hold it for it?
We didn't pronounce it, to know if to go ahead and fix it, or if not to fix it.
But they can hold it, because they, we use them as storage, right? If that's a Scott RV, we use it for storage, so we'll leave it and just pay the storage cost.
Okay. And don't fix it until we have a vote on it to appropriate the money.
Perfect, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Stern.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, my computer fell asleep.
Evening, Board. My name is Mark Lanting. I'm Dean of Communications and Humanities, here for Dr. Smith, who couldn't be here tonight, to present to you our progress on the DARA Developmental Education Reform Act and its required, what, multiple measures of placements and new approaches to developmental ed. So, so for a summary, placement was redesigned to include additional ways for students to satisfy requirements and place into our courses. The biggest change was, we're now using high school GPA as a placement measure, and that's shown some very positive results. In response to DARA, our whole developmental education program has been redesigned over the past three years, three, four years now, actually. And we have reduced the number of courses required to complete developmental education track. Developmental English and Math each consists of one course now, and offers a prerequisite support option for gateway courses. and offers a co-requisite support option for Gateway courses. The redesign of DevEd is helping students achieve success. Students needing developmental English are completing English 103. That's the course right after English 101 at a rate of 76%, whereas previously that number was 30.2% going through that whole developmental sequence. Similarly, 72% of students beginning in developmental math are completing Gateway course, whereas previously it was only 18.3%. I'll just show you a couple of summary slides to help you see. So these are the measures of placement that we have. Multiple measures of placement. That includes SAT, now ACT, Accuplacer, the high school GPA, GED, CASIS, and Ebreti and Alex for math. So there are lots of ways students can get to the on-ramp. Let me skip a few and get to some more sound new data. Thought this was a pretty powerful slide. It shows what we had. So previously, we had one, two, three, four developmental English or reading classes that students would have to get through. We had one, two, three, four, five, six developmental math classes. So we had very low numbers succeeding. They would get lost in those pathways. So once you don't do well in developmental class, the chances of your returning as a student are very, very low. Chances of succeeding are also very, very low. Now we have just an English, a combined English and reading class called English 98s. And then the support class for English 101 is English 100. That English 100 is for students who just missed that cut score, that GPA score, and they end up in a cohort, taking English 101 with extra support. The same is true for math. So they take Math 96 or 96, 96A or S. One is STEM-bound major, the other is non-STEM. And then they have all these other math courses with supports. And so we are seeing decent success rates in both areas. So I think some of the most salient data and some of the most important results we have is that students co-enrolled in English 100 and 101 have a 76% course completion rate in English 103. It's fun because we've been running this English 100 and 101 long enough now to where we can track their progress and see legitimate data and see that it's making a huge difference for them. Similarly, students who took 96A or S had a 72% course completion rate in the co-requisite support math courses. And so again, previously, the rates were very, very low. So the next steps, we need to explore the progression of the students, keep the data coming. Thank you for our wonderful IR department who supplies us with terrific data and ways to look at things. And we'll look at the curriculum as we go to make sure we're refining and improving where necessary.
Thank you.
Questions? Question? I'll start with the trustee.
Thank you for this. Can any student enroll with the co-requisite? Or is that just for the students who are just over the threshold?
Yeah, it's for students who just fall below the threshold.
Okay.
And so I know of some instructors who invite their students to say, if you want the extra help, we're here. But they can't take it for credit that way.
Bob?
Yes. So just looking at the charts, the number of boxes before and after. I mean, okay, you got less boxes. Does that make them, does that make them easier to get through? Or can you explain? Take math, for example. What structurally changed? And were the standards the same?
Yeah.
In other words, were the standards the same before and after? And is it just less courses? Or is it same stuff?
Yeah.
Packaged into fewer courses? Or explain the mechanics?
Yeah. So this was a faculty-led endeavor. And they worked very hard at condensing the courses wherever possible and maintaining the rigor of the necessary credit hour. They put in the essential elements in the courses that now exist. And so for English 98, I was a part of the team that was faculty-led that combined the reading outcomes and the writing outcomes in order to just have one class. And to make sure that students have higher rates of success. And the data seems to be bearing out that it is a more effective pathway.
Anything else, Bob? Kristin?
No, I just appreciate you looking at this because I was one of those students who had to take all the math, the extra maths that didn't count. And that was really frustrating.
I was too. I was a student at South Suburban College. I was determined, but I kept on getting class placed into Math 09 something until I passed it, took stats beautifully. And now stats are a part of my life, right? Yeah. So that's a good testimony. Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Nelson, who's still going through classes to figure out why.
Yeah, that's not true.
Yes, it is. You go through continuing education stuff all the time.
I did very well in calculus and English. I had a little dispute with my English. It was on my English.
Imagine that.
I'm glad you said it.
So I was right and he was wrong.
You didn't have anything? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
No, I didn't.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, you called on him and he didn't.
Way to go.
You just did it out of habit, I know.
Yeah.
I do a lot of things out of habit.
I got questions coming up.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I appreciate that, having been, not in college, but before then, having had to go through different courses just to move on. So, and it didn't warrant credit, but they certainly helped move along. So now, I read an article on DARA, though. Do we, does your administration find it challenging to keep up with some of the changes since the 2021 and stuff?
Well, yes. I would say that Developmental Education Reform Act, this was a concerted effort across, because, because it was legislation.
Right.
There was a concerted effort across the Illinois Community Colleges. So CAOs were getting together at the charge of presidents throughout the state to develop this reform, to develop this training, to finally get to a point where we have multiple measures. So yes, it was very difficult. But the other piece, and you just said it, this was one of the hows. You guys were asking before about what are some of the things or strategies that were implemented. From my perspective, from a vice president of Student Affairs perspective, students got lost in the tunnel. And when we did a Six Sigma Lean study, probably my second or third year at RVC, that was one of the biggest issues, that students would go through development education, lose their confidence, and quit or stop out. But on top of that, those students who actually went through developmental education would end up using all of their financial aid. They would tap out of their financial aid to a point that they didn't have access or a lot of financial aid for the four-year when they transferred. This is very, has been one of the most instrumental strategies, even though it started with law or legislation. But you really do see the success of students going through the pipeline semester after session. And that's, that's a, that's a great thing. So I just want to share. But that's a how.
That's it. And this is not, it's not necessarily an inside joke. Just that in the last few months, been talking to President Spearmint about goals and how you get there. And it's, the how came up in a discussion a little while ago. And it came up because all of the trustees, given our involvement in the community, not only here, not only are we concerned about, you know, the, the, reaching the goals for policies, reaching the target enrollment goals and target fiduciary goals, some or all of us have an interest in how we actually get there and, you know, what and how we do it. We don't want to do operational. We don't want to go into your offices and look over your shoulders and stuff. But just an overview, just to know that what you're doing is actually helping achieve those goals. So I appreciate your, your team taking the time to explain the, you know, the how, you know, for this. So thank you. Not just the end goal. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your feedback. And have a good rest of your evening. I'm off to a fifth-grade band concert.
Go, go! I went to a number of those.
Thank you.
All right. So we are, we're done with teaching and learning, right? Okay. Let's move on. Trustee Cadilla, finance?
Yes, ma'am. There she is.
Good evening. Up first, we have purchase report A with FY26 amendments. She's getting there. All right. So we have Highland for an increase of $1,675.37 and not to exceed of $91,675.37. This increase is reflecting a higher-than-anticipated cost in the contractual renewal recently received for Perceptive Content, which is our document imaging system and professional services associated with the cloud migration. This is the first year of a five-year agreement. The second item on this particular report is for OPN, an increase of $200,000 and not to exceed of $800,000. This is for additional architectural and engineering services for our architect of record. These services are needed to repair the rusted pipes that were discovered under the Stunstrom Student Center Bridge and to modify the stage in the Student Center atrium to include a ramp that complies with the Americans with Disability Act. Are there any questions regarding this report?
Okay, none.
Okay. Purchase report B is FY25 purchases. First item is Honor Lock for $26,390.91. This is for the online proctoring software and services that is used by our online learning department, who uphold academic integrity in online and hybrid courses. This is the first year of a three-year contract. The second item is a to-be-determined not-to-exceed $50,000. This expense is to purchase a used Ford Mach-E anticipated to be a 2023 or 2024 model. The Mach-E is a fully electric vehicle manufactured by Ford Motor Company. And its compact design and accessible component layout makes it an excellent instructional tool for the EV or electric vehicle program. Because these particular vehicles sell quickly, the specific vendor will be identified after the board approves this expense. And to demonstrate competitive pricing, quotes were obtained from three vendors. This will be funded through the RV, or through the RevUp EV grant. Now, I just want to explain the reason this cost is to be determined is that car dealerships will not hold these vehicles as we go through the approval process here at the college. The intent is for the college to purchase the least expensive vehicle, used vehicle available. And since it is a used vehicle, it is exempt from bidding. If there is a consensus among the board this evening, we could move forward immediately to acquiring that Ford Mach-E from the lowest vendor. Otherwise, we'll wait another two weeks to approach the vendors. Are there any questions regarding that particular item?
To our attorney, we can't vote, can we? It's on the agenda, but we're not, occasionally, we don't normally have votes during these meetings.
Thank you. Correct, because as the committee of the whole, we do not traditionally take votes on this. I think you can.
direction. I'm ready for directional consensus.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Come back before the board.
The final purchase will come back before the board, right?
Correct.
So if we give you consensus now, do you think you'll have a document for us to vote on in a couple of weeks? Well, I mean, if the car's still available?
Potentially.
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 All right. Otherwise, January.
Okay.
Consider yourself the consensus. The board, for the record, does note that the board chair indicates there's a consensus for moving ahead with the lowest cost. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the only other question or comment I would have, if you're looking for another vehicle, you might go straight to Ford. The Ford president is very talkative and gabby about how behind they are on EV technology and how there's short 6,000 mechanics throughout all the Ford dealerships. So they may be willing to somehow partner with if we could have somehow let brand part of something in the program, Ford, something, something, you know? So just reach out to them. He just talks about how great everybody else's EVs are. And I'm just like, why don't you play up your own cars? You just trying to offset all the recalls or what? But it's just a suggestion. The worst thing you can say is no. So, yeah.
All right. Item C is for Atlas Toyota Material Handling for $37,771.95. This is for a new 2025 JLG Electric Scissor Lift for use for the college's plant operation and maintenance department. This will replace an old SJ3 Skyjack Scissor Lift that is continually requiring maintenance. Bid 25-28 Scissor Lift received two submittals that were opened on November 5th. And this award includes a one-year full warranty. Item D is for Morse Electric for $264,230. This is for the second phase of a two-phase project to upgrade the fire alarm system across multiple main campus buildings to meet the current campus standard of Johnson Controls simplex. RFP 25-27 Fire Alarm Upgrade Phase 2 received four proposals, which were opened on October 27th. Morse Electric was the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. And this includes a 10% contingency and is a not-to-exceed.
Do we have fire alarm systems in ATC?
Yes.
Yes?
They were probably upgraded when we.
They were new when we put them in.
Yeah, when we came in.
The upgrades for the main campus.
Yeah. Remind us for, for this campus, is any, any other facilities?
This one's for WTC in particular. WTC.
Okay.
So it's the main, on main campus.
Okay. Doesn't look like Helen wanted to work. Okay. Any other questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, so, just so I'm clear, Morse Electric has done, done our previous work? Or did, or their bid was accepted and this is the cost of the second phase of it? What, what are we doing here?
I'm going to let Rick address that question.
I believe you're wondering about the phasing. Phase one, I had come to you earlier, many of the panels on campus were 25 years old and failing. So phase one of the, it's just a way of us keeping track of the 30 or 40 projects we have going. So the fire alarm phase one was the replacement of all the panels, which we did. Now, as part of phase two, we're going to go around to each building and upgrade the wiring. The WTC, I noticed it doesn't say that, but this is for the WTC, is the first one we want to do because WTC is the building that we have the most issues with the wiring. So we're going to be fixing the wiring and in doing so, upgrading the system for enunciation and other items that are needed for, to bring everything up to code.
So, just so I'm clear, and thank you for that explanation. Morse Electric, then, you know, they are the low bidder and they are, they are a responsible bidder. But I, I noticed on, on purchase report A that OPN, which I, if I remember right, they're the ones who did the original work on shoring up or building the, our, our bridge to the Rock Valley College Bridge that we've had to repair.
Okay. They, they did the, they helped design and do the top pointing project.
Okay.
But they, they didn't do the orig, I don't know what you mean by original design.
Okay. Well, that's good enough.
Okay.
And I know that we had bids that were substantially more than their bid to do that, either that work or follow-up work. either that work or follow-up work. But, uh, you know, it did occur to me that $600,000 with a $200,000 kicker is about a third more of the bid. And I, I trust, though, that these bids are much more closely aligned. We're not going to get a, a request from Morse Electric for more money and, when they do the work, are we?
Okay. I, I think I understand my question. I'm trying. I think what you're saying is, is it because of the design issue? So the design issues for, that I brought forward were items that were discovered during the replacement of the bridge. When we replaced some of the seals that we knew were old, we found out that water had ran down inside the building and basically rusted out the pipes that feed the student center, PEC, and WTC. So I'm coming back for additional money for that because we discovered that during, during the, the tuck pointing process, we, a project, we discovered a lot of things. One, that the wall fell down, and two, that these pipes are rusted and they're the main feet. We can wait and do those as part of next year. I can wait till August to get that on the agenda. But I'm not, I'm saying there's an issue that I would like to address right now, which are these rusted pipes and the supports for them. I don't know if they're gonna last a month or two weeks. And as far as, as the fire alarm upgrades, this was always planned, this was the process that was planned. We've been setting aside life safety money for this. I believe we set aside $5 million because we knew that we had 30-year-old fire alarm systems. So this phase two is just the second half, which is to go into the buildings and actually replace the wiring and the enunciators and all the other items that are failing within the system. The first one was to do the, the actual panels.
My, my question really is, when Morse goes in to do that, are they going to come back with a bid, oh, it's gonna take us more money because we found this or that? Or am I talking apples and oranges?
Yes, you're talking apples and oranges. The first thing is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we paid for an architectural study of certain repairs. During that study, they found even more repairs needed to be done, which required more services as part of that. What we're doing in this phase two, we got panels at one end and the, the actual sensors and stuff at, at the other end. That, those are known commodities. The only thing that might change now, because since the panels have been replaced, would be the endpoints over here, and Morse is quoted on replacing all the wiring in between. So there's not likely that there's a lot there unless they find architectural problems, and that's a totally different, you know? That's unrelated to Morse's work, though.
Correct. If they find architectural issues looking up inside, or if they find something, it won't be Morse fixing it.
Right.
It'll be somebody else. We always run the risk of when we tear something apart, we're going to find something more. In this particular situation with alarm panels, that risk is low. When you tear apart a 60-year-old bridge and you start looking at it very closely, that goes up. I don't know if that helps?
It does.
Okay.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on to item E, UMB Card Services for $740,000. This expense is for miscellaneous commodities purchased through the college's procurement or P Card program. Illinois Bank and Trust, or IBNT, was the provider of the college's Visa P Card program through Heartland Financial, which was approved by the board in June of 2025 for not to exceed amount of $1 million. IBNT has transitioned to UMB Bank, which ended the college's program with IBNT, and we are beginning a new Visa program with UMB. This amount is to cover P Card program for the remainder of fiscal year '26. This is a pass-through expense for miscellaneous small commodities purchased in accordance with the college's P Card procedures.
Questions? Any question I have? Is the P Card a physical card?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You don't have anybody using it through Android Pay or Apple Pay or anything like that on their personal devices, do you?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
They're not supposed to be exact.
Yeah, that, that would, yeah, that would.
All right. Item F is for Hartwig Mechanical for $220,000. This is for the unit build, unit bidder contract for preventative maintenance, mechanical services, and hourly repair services in accordance with the terms and conditions outlined in Request for Proposal 25-13 Mechanical Services. Again, this RFP covered a broad scope for the heating and cooling of college buildings, broken down into three separate packages. Historically, these services have cost over $110,000 annually across all four non-contracted vendors. RFP 25-13 received 12 proposals across all the different packages, and they were opened on September 10th, 2025. Protaria was reviewed in the proposals and included adherence to the specifications, ability to maintain, and repair the college's specific equipment, and depth of experience, safety plan, and others. The response is proposed. Preventative maintenance costs were evaluated, as well as regular and emergency hourly costs for repair services, while Helm provided the lower overall pricing, the hourly repair costs were higher than Hartwig Mechanicals, which can be costly over time. Hartwig Mechanical's proposal demonstrated experience in all of the college's required equipment, including the Aeon rooftop units at the ATC, which have proven difficult to maintain in low temperatures. Hartwig Mechanical was identified as the best fit for the college, and the recommendation is to award them all three packages for not to exceed FY26 cost of $220,000 for all preventative maintenance and repair services. The unit bidder contract will be for a three-year term with two optional one-year renewals.
Questions to the left of me? Questions to the right? Bob Trojan.
It just popped into my head, whatever happened to the repair, oh, the cleaning service? There's a big contract that was sent back for re-Quoting and whatever happened?
That will be going out for bid in the spring again.
What?
It will be going out in the spring for rebid.
Oh, in the spring?
You have an extension of the existing contract until the spring under the current, the, the previous terms of that agreement?
We had two one-year extensions.
Okay.
Thought before it was kind of like a rush, eat it now type of thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that update, then. Great question, Bob. John?
Uh, thank you. Just so I'm clear, Helen, the, even though Helm had the lower bid, you're recommending Hartwig because of their lower annual repair costs per hourly rate?
First, this was not a bid, this was a request for proposal, which is different. So we are looking at their overall services that they will provide to the college at a specific cost, just like when we go out for banking services or some audit services. We're looking at overall, we're looking at costs, but overall services that they provide to the college as well.
Well, can you explain that to me? What, what, you mean, overall services not on this list or not in this bid?
So part of it is, we are looking for a vendor that can manage and repair and maintain all of our systems and have a reasonable cost. We have struggled with the ATC and the Aeon units, and Hartwig, we've, college has determined will be the best fit for all of the college's HVAC mechanicals.
Because at the time, Helm had opportunity, and they have struggled to maintain those services?
Correct. Helm has been our unit bidder for three years, or three years now.
Okay.
And there was a, and I believe there was also a question about whether they had on staff or subbed out the technicians that would be trained, qualified to work on some of those units? Or was that, or a different project?
No, you are correct. They did later provide the documentation, but we also found out that, that those technicians, we don't believe, had ever actually been at the ATC, so.
Is, is Hart, or Hartwig a responsible bidder?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
And every, all these PPs are getting a piece of the RVC pie, because they all have a presence here, as they do, again, full disclosure, then they all have a presence at Lee County, too. I don't contract them out, but they do do work that I'm familiar with, so.
And you're, you're supporting this expenditure?
I'm supporting it. If, I have no reason to challenge the administration's preference over Hartwig over Helm, and, and they are responsible, using a large part of the same labor force.
Okay.
No further questions?
All right. That concludes the purchase reports. We'll now move on to the resolution abating a portion of the working cash fund and reimbursement for CL2 and HSC capital projects. But this resolution is to permanently abate a portion of the working cash fund for the capital expenditures incurred for the remodel and addition of the elevator for the Health Sciences Center. Rock Valley College issued working bonds, Series 2024, in November of 2024 to fund alterations, modeling, and equipment of district facilities, including Classroom 2 and Health Science Center. A little background, in December of 2024, the Board of Trustees approved partial abatement in the amount of $12,415,582 to fund a portion of the $18 million transfer to the CDB trust account for CL2. The amount of the, this request is to permanently, permanently abate $1,635,484.83 for incurred expenses through November 5th, 2025, for the capital expenditures associated with the build-out of HSC. And there will be a subsequent request for abatement in the future as these projects continue to progress and the elevator is installed by the end of this year. Are there any questions?
Questions? John?
So, you know, what you're telling me, then, is that the elevator will be installed at the end of this year?
That's the goal.
Uh, okay. And that's, is that our goal, or is that the contractor's goal, or both?
I'd say it's both parties' goal.
Okay. And you're asking at our last meeting of December that we transfer money that's in our working cash fund to help defray expenses?
Yeah, it's to permanently abate it so it, we do not have to pay it back out of operations. So it's permanently reimbursing oper, how a working cash fund works, typically, it's like a bank account, and you would take from working cash fund to help pay for operations or other things, and then you have to pay it back. If you permanently abate it, we do not have to pay it back from operations.
Okay.
So that's what the request is.
And that's a good thing, you feel?
Yes, it is a good thing. It is the intent of why we issued the bonds.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
No problem. The next item-
Before, before we go on, I just want to point out, I appreciate questions from all of the trustees on these matters. Committee of the whole, it's the time to ask these questions. Not that we don't, can't ask them at the regular meeting, it's just it's, this is, we get them all out, and if it gives you time to respond to our questions, if you can't do it today, get back to us in, in advance of the, of the voting meeting.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the trustees' questions, and I appreciate your time following up with any questions that we ask you to follow up on.
You're welcome. So the next item under Finance is the summary of the fiscal year 2026 estimated revenues by source. So each college, or each year, I'm sorry, the college is required to certify the 2026 estimated revenues by their source based on the FY26 budget that was approved in June of 2025. This is required as part of the truth and taxation. So if you go to the next, in the document, you can see that's the breakout of the expected revenues based on the budget that was approved in June. Any questions regarding this?
Questions? No.
All right. Next is Lovey Year 2025 Estimated Taxes Required and Certificate of Compliance for the Truth and Taxation Hearing. This is for the Truth and Taxation Hearing that is going to be held on December 16th, 2025. There have been no changes since the board approved scheduling the hearing in October. Notice of the hearing has been posted on the website, on the office, on doors, and will be published in the Rock River Times and the Beaudir Republican, Republican yet this week. I believe one is being, um, it will be advertised in, on Wednesday, and the other one is Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Are there any questions?
Any questions on that? Trustee?
And Ellen, do we publish in any Hispanic newspapers?
No, we do not.
Could we consider doing that?
We can look into it. We never have. We'll have to see if they can take legal advertisements.
Well, I, I, I mean, our students, if I recall, are, there's a lot of Hispanics, so that tells me that maybe we should do that.
I support that suggestion.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, look into it and see what's available.
Well, in Rockford, there's El Tiempo Gloria. Familiar with any other ones?
Sosa?
Yeah, there used to be a couple others. I don't know if they're still around. I think they're weeklies, and so the timing could be an issue.
Right.
So those are the things to consider.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Well, what, what, we publish in a weekly?
I just refresh my memory, what is the overall change in the tax rate total?
The tax rate, I believe, is a decrease of .08.
A decrease?
A decrease. Basically flat. Any other questions?
It's FY, it was sent to La Bamba Radio. So, per Jennifer, it was sent there.
What?
La Bamba Radio, the online, the internet media.
Oh, okay.
And that has a huge following.
Right.
Okay.
It's worldwide.
So we did address it. Thank you for sharing.
Let's compare and contrast.
All right. The last item this evening for me is the Cash and Investment Report. Please note, this report was ran as of November 20th due to this early meeting date in December. Operating cash and investments decreased by 2.8 million from October 31st to 108.7 million as of November 20th. Operating in cash and investments is at 101.21% of operating budget as of November 20th. Working cash funds have decreased 1.05 million during November due to funds to pay for the remodeling of the third-floor Health Sciences Center. And lastly, capital funds have decreased 1.5 million to 84.3 million in November due to expenditures for the Downtown West project. Are there any questions?
The usual.
We're in good shape.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Go ahead. It's on my, it's, I guess it's Gloria's, but I have, I have a, I have an issue with the references. This is construction manager at risk, because I don't think we're actually holding our construction manager at risk, and if we ever do this again, we hire the construction manager at risk first, and then we do the architect after that, because that's the only way the construction manager at risk can get a full control of the cost going through the project. But that's my opinion on it, so having, having some training in it, so, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the operations.
Thank you, trustee Trojan. Good evening, board. The first item on the agenda is the change orders for the downtown campus. As you can see, we are getting several change orders, which is somewhat to be expected in a project of this size, especially as we near close-in, where we start transitioning from the outside to the inside of the building. You can see that there are a fair amount of change orders in there. We're currently slightly over 10% use of the, of the 2.2-ish million dollars of contingency, but we're over 50% done with the project. So I think we're still in good standings on the contingency, and we continue, myself and the architects, continue to work diligently to work through the change order process and get the prices down as much as possible. Are there any questions on the change orders?
So you have almost 2 million- So you have almost $2 million left, the contingency.
Correct.
Read it right.
Done. Done? Yes, sir. I see reconciliation as $67,500, let's say.
Mm-hmm.
And also, a unsuitable non-bearing allowance, roughly $30,000. And those seems to be, seem to be the only really large ones. Oh, there was a $20,000 one. Anything unusual about those, and what's a reconciliation thing?
So, when you take, when you go out for a, when we went out for bid package four, there was items that we bid for the project, and then when we went out for bid package five, there was items that were continued in, and changes were made during that process that had to be worked through. This process started months ago, and we went through item by item and found items that weren't properly documented in the, in the bid documents, which is not unusual for a project of this size. These things consisted of how the walls were fastened, the correct fasteners, different, different items that were, had discrepancies between bid package four and big package five. You know, had we gone out and been able to do it in one, one bid, we probably wouldn't have had these issues. But unfortunately, due to, you know, still coming out of the whole COVID situation and things of that nature, we had to order some of the HVAC stuff ahead of time, or we would have never received it in time. So the reconciliation process is a rather lengthy process where a contractor says, it says this, we, we thought it meant this, and myself and the architects and the CMR sit down and discuss it and decide that, yes, that was not included in there, that is something that was added. So there is a need for a change order for that. But it's a lengthy process when you have a multiple bid situation.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah. And as far as the unsuitable soils, we could still find unsuitable soils when they finish up. Unsuitable soils are, unfortunately, because we chose the campus we chose, we knew there was going to be unsuitable soils, and it hasn't, it has lived up to its expectations. There are a lot of unsuitable soils. Any other questions on the downtown?
How, how, how much unsuitable soil are we going to have to pay for, then? Do you have any?
So, we have one little area left that has not been worked through, I guess, for lack of a better word. It's where the construction trailers sit right now, and that won't be done, and was planned not to be done until next summer. We don't know what those soils look like underneath, and we won't know until we move the trailers out of the way and we start to dig it up to put the parking lot in, and that's when we'll find out. I don't expect it to be a large amount, but I've been wrong before.
Well, thank you.
And we have $2 million in contingency.
Correct.
With, with, with underscored unsuitable soils. So, okay, thank you. Continue.
Okay. The next item is the HSC third floor buildout and second floor elevator. The third floor buildout is basically complete. We're just working on minor punch list items, so that's moving along very well. The elevator is moving in full gear right now, and they're looking to have that completed by the end of December. They're working extra hard to get that done, and we feel that they will, will meet that goal. We did have a couple new items, change order seven, which is the addition of helical piles in the second elevator shaft. So what happened there is when they cut through the floor of the building to put in the base for the elevator, it was determined that those soil samples down there weren't suitable for the weight of an elevator. Happens particularly around here. There's a reason we're called Spring Creek and Spring Brook is because we have a lot of soft soils. So we had to add some additional helical piles into that. In addition, there was an alternate bid for Otis to maintain the elevator. We found out from our current vendor that we could get that services for less money if we so chose. So at this point, we are going to just take the one-year warranty with Otis and then go out and get competitive pricing for maintaining it in the future.
Do you know who your vendors are, who would be in the market for that?
The one that we currently use is Schumacher, but there's others that are available.
All right.
The next item, because we have a fair amount of projects, is the security upgrade project, phase one. This, this project is basically in the final stages of closeout. That being said, there was a couple of items that were discovered during the punch list walkthrough. We've determined that there were some water sensors over in the Springbrook House that didn't make the original documentation, and we needed to add those to ensure that the IT technology down there were notified if, if there's any moisture that gets in. And we also discovered a couple of motion sensors that we needed additional coverage because we didn't have the proper coverage. So that item is on there. We should be coming back very shortly with a closeout for this particular project, where we'll get the rest of the money, the rest of the credit back. There's no questions on that one. I will go to tuck pointing phase one. This is my favorite project. This project is, is complete. We have basically a final credit of a contingency of $13,771, and also a $9,600, or $6,900 credit for that project. If you recall, this is the project where the wall fell down, and now we have a tuck pointing phase two, which is now replacing the tour closest to the Student Center, which collapsed during the initial project. So we'll be closing this one out, and phase two has begun, and they are working on that wall. Well, I don't think they worked on it today because of the snow, but they will be.
Trustee Nelson?
The health services remodeling, is there going to be any open house or announcement of that, or is, and is it imminent?
I'm, I'm getting a head nod and then a head shake, so I'm assuming, yes, we want to do something, no, it's not imminent. Okay, there you go.
But you will have a chance to see it. If you attend the legislative breakfast, trustees will get a chance to see it and tour it on that day, at the end of the breakfast.
Trustee Trojan?
Just another issue. Is there any update on the, the finding of the chemicals and what caused the, who did it, and whatever? Or is that still being investigated?
I will, I was going to look for an update today, and I got sidetracked on some other things, but I can definitely find out and get back to you.
Yeah, if you could have an update for us at the next meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll do that. All right. Let's see, that's all for change orders. Next item is the personnel report. You can see that there are two instructor positions. I've been informed that they are conducting the interviews, final interviews this week for those two items. And so on your next report, those two individuals will be listed. I've also been informed that the aviation mechan, the part-time or temporary full-time aviation positions have been accepted by two people, and we will have the information for them. We are planning on a spring start for the process of hiring permanent full-time instructors.
For aviation.
Is that a hand up or no? Okay.
So the aviation, the two of them, are they replacements or additions? Pardon me?
I was just, my colleague just informed me they're retirements, so we're replacing people who have retired.
So at the last meeting, I had raised the issue about if there is a continuing backlog or waitlist of students waiting to get in to the maintenance program. Should we be looking at additional instructors? Have you looked at that?
And before you answer, I'm going to tease my fellow trustee. He's, he's, he's mentioned more than once how he likes the way your administration manages the budget by not hiring people. So I'm very impressed that you want to hire people, Bob.
Well, because, because, you know, in our trip, in our trip through AAR, I mean, the, the tour guide told, told me that they need more people to be working there, and at the same time, I keep hearing that our aviation maintenance has a waitlist. Ergo, should we be expanding the aviation program?
And I get it, but I do want to also acknowledge the administration's concerns that sometimes they hear mixed signals, get mixed signals from us.
Although sometimes a waitlist is good, you know, you get people excited that they need to get in and get on that waitlist.
Higher, higher.
There's no waitlist.
My interruptions may be less tense or more tense, but please, address the question.
Try to change your mind.
Kids are.
So these two full-time positions that we have, they makes us have a full complement of instructors. So there is nowhere else to put people on a waiting list anyway. So people have to remain on a waiting list.
You're physically limited in terms of--
That's right, we're physically limited. But in terms of staffing, we have our full complement. What Rick was trying to explain is that these two positions are making sure we have continuity with instruction.
Yeah.
And in the spring semester, because the time was short, we will have a full search to have permanent replacements. So these two people are, will be allowed to apply for those permanent positions in the spring semester.
But at the end, you're still not increasing the teaching capacity.
Well, I mean, there's no room to fit anybody else.
We would have to-- I know, that's what I'm hearing.
Do we, do we originally hire another aviation, or was this it for the, in the last couple of years? Did we increase aviation faculty, or this is it?
No, this is it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you suggesting trustee Trojan, you want to expand the program?
Well--
I'm not laughing.
I should think we should look at it, yes. I mean, it's a money-making program, and the kids that graduate from that thing, they go out for great jobs.
Yes.
AAR is looking for people right now in Rockford--
$40 an hour.
--as well as around the country. So to me, you got a, a demand that's waiting to be filled.
But that's something that the board will have to decide, expand the facilities.
We would also have to have conversations with the airport authority, because we only have so much space, and we can't really go up.
Of course, but you got to look at all other options. How do you expand the program? Get more people going through there.
I think the general consensus is to your administration to research and come back to us with options or alternatives.
Yes.
And whether or not you actually recommend them or not, too.
Do not ignore it, because I ain't, I won't.
Fair enough.
We put enough money towards it, we can make it happen.
Thank you.
I, not to create more work for you, you know, project number 91. But I mean, we're, we're laughing about it, but I mean, it's a valid point. We've got a strong interest in our program. It's been successful, has a measure of success, and it's actually meeting a need in the community, not only the community, but nation, you know, nationwide. If there's something we can do to help you advance that, let us know.
Yeah, let us know.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will look into it.
Thank you, Bob.
The next item on the agenda is the facilities event. The areas that I want to concentrate on are the ones that I think are, are very important and special, and those are the midsemester pinning ceremonies. If you see at the, towards the bottom above the January, we have the nursing program pinning ceremony in the atrium, plebodyne ceremony, graphic arts design, and the WEI winter completion ceremonies. Those are the ones that I'd like to highlight. You can see the other items that are out there. Any questions on the--
I don't see the Ironman competition where they pulled the tech bus back to the camp.
I don't think our insurance would allow us to do that.
Make the CEOs do it.
Oh, yeah.
CEO challenge.
Does anybody have any questions on the calendar, or missing anything? Appreciate you highlighting certain items on the calendar, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
All right. I believe that do it for operations, trustee Trojan?
Yes.
I ignored you at the beginning just because that constructor manager at risk kind of tweets me. Other business, unfinished, unfinished business.
I do not have any unfinished business at this time.
New business?
I do not have any new business at this time.
I believe we have something to go into closed session on, is it, Rick? Okay, so I hear a motion to adjourn to closed session to adjust, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting per Section 2C-1, and/or 2 collective negotiating member between public body and its employees' indoor representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees per Section 2C-2, all in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Motion.
Seconded.
Motion by trustee Nelson, seconded by Simpson. Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Trojan?
Yes.
Goldsmith?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Salto?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And before we go into close, please acknowledge who you want to enclose.
Ellen Olson, Dr. Stewart, Dr. Huntley, and of course, our attorney, Matthew Gardner. That'll be it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to reconvene into open session. We were inclosed, we chatted, we came to, we didn't vote on anything. And so we're going to now go into our next item, item N. Next regular board meeting of trustees is December 16th, 2025 at 5:15 PM. The meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Room, P R room 0214, and the Educational Resource, or E R C, of the main campus. And then the next committee of the whole meeting is January 13th, 2026 at 5:15 PM. Meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Room, P R 0214, in the Educational Resource Center in the main campus. And I'd also like to let the public know we'll have a good number of trustees at a December 9th luncheon and possibly a December 17th breakfast, but we will not be voting on any issues at those times. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by Nelson, second by Trojan, roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Trojan?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Salto?
Yes.
Gorski? Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for your participation.